Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine. Cindy Valentine here. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Reagan.
Here.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
All right. If I could entertain a motion of bills payable of 10,885 and 49 cents.
Oh, we gotta have a motion.
I will make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $10,885.49.
It's waiting for you. I support.
Okay, any discussion? We have motion of support. Any discussion on that? Very none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Reagan. Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next is the supervisors' report. And our water levels, I'm gonna start with a high water report. Our water levels have been maintaining the same. It hasn't been going up or down. I'm gonna try to share this file. Hang on one second. Share the screen.
Artie, can you mute us while you're doing your supervisors' report?
Yeah, I'll do that. Hang on. Mute all. Okay, so, Nigel, head if you can shake, if you can hear me. All right, because I can't hear you. Um, looking for, hang on one second. Oh, where'd it go? Where'd it go? I'm gonna put on, well, that's okay. What I was gonna try and put on the screen is the latest Corps of Engineers report with their estimate. And they have the water peaking just above this level. They basically have it staying at this level for at this level for to the middle of June. Right there. To the middle of June and then start going down. The average, or the average precipitation for last month, for April, is actually an inch less than the normal. So that's helping us out quite a bit. And they're, they're saying that May's precipitation's supposed to be lower than, or lower than the average, too. So anyhow, maybe we dodged a bullet. It's a little too early to say yet, but we still have wind events also coming up. I've been, well, as one of the agenda items, I've been putting our, my efforts more towards enforcement right now, because it doesn't matter what laws we have, enforcement's the biggest issue. And as of right now, unfortunately, the St. Clair County Marine Patrol does not have a commanding officer for their, for the position. I've been trying, I've been playing phone tag with Sheriff Tim Donlin and a few other people last couple of days about that to see how they are planning on fulfilling it and everything else. And that's one of the agenda items, actually. So I'll, I'll go more towards that. And also, as far as the new, or the rule, I should say, for the no wake, I've gotten zero communication with the folks at the DNR from there. I mean, I, they're not answering the phone or their emails, so apparently they're not working. We are still selling unfilled sandbags at a cost $18 per hundred. And you gotta get ahold of Chrissy, our treasurer, by email or phone, and she'll set up an appointment to where you can pick them up and pay at the same time right here. We are going to start selling this week the filled sandbags. We were taking, and how that's gonna work, basically, you come and pay Chrissy for them, how many you want. And you said, we're gonna, we're gonna set, set them out by appointment for pickup. In other words, say, okay, I bought 100, I wanna pick up 25, I'm coming this and this time. And we got an area back in the water department where we'll set them there for the people to come pick them up. So we need at least 24 hours' notice for the appointment time. And we got the details worked out with the water department, Chrissy, how they're gonna communicate that and everything else. And really, that's about it right now for the high water. The COVID-19 report is definitely flattened out the curve in the county and the township. We only have one active case in the township right now. So that's really good news. And the testing's going on for the, at the first community health center. This testing is available, and I heard rumors are gonna start having antibody tests here a little bit. Not sure it's when and how that will work. I'm sure it'll go to the first responders, first essential, essential employer, employees after that. Donations have been going really well with the, for the food pantry and, and the food giveaways, like verbally, someone told me they're gonna drop a check off tomorrow for it. I mean, it's, it's, it's going tremendous. I, I can't express my gratitude and how great our, and, and, and how giving our community is. And as you know, everything's, you know, it changes by the hour on, on what's going on and the rules that we have to, to, to deal with. Our water, just to let everybody know, on the board, our water department is back this week. And we're doing it with social distancing, and they've all been trained on the new procedures as far as desanitizing them, everything, and washing their hands, ass, the whole, whole nine hours. We're putting one person in per vehicle. And they, they, that's their vehicle. They don't, you know, switch from car to car or anything else. I'm hoping with a little luck, this could be our last Zoom meeting. I know the executive order allowing us to meet like this expires here before our next meeting, so either that has to be renewed or we can go back to the old way of meeting our, in our hall with social distancing them. I was planning on making sure that none of the chairs are probably more than 10 feet apart, or at least 10 feet apart, and, and, you know, and do it that way. And also, unless something changes, I'm, we're planning on opening the office May 18th. The executive order is supposed to expire May 15th, so we'll see. They're coming to install the glass tomorrow morning for the glass partitions for our counters in the office. And tomorrow, I'm on a a conference call is with something about with FEMA and the, the new grants are available to local municipalities such as ourselves. And I know you have to be logged in with your information on, on one of the two conference calls that are tomorrow for you to even be able to apply. So I'll be on that tomorrow, and it'll be interesting to see what they have to say. So that's pretty much what I have on that. I've been doing a lot of work on the beachfront part, or the beach park property. We're dealing with lot splits and surveys and, and things along those lines. And we tend to, are, now, it's pretty much rescheduled now, the cleanup weekend for June 27th and 28th. It'd be 27th on the mainland behind the water department, and both 27th and June 28th on Brown's Field on Harson's Island. And and we've been also doing a lot of work on the Saw Grant, and we're going back as far as 2013 to get the chargebacks that we can and that, been working pretty much a lot, not lately, on budget process. We have 17 budgets and going through that. We, there is a food giveaway scheduled for May 9th at 10:30 at the Elmac Lions. And we're looking for two more dates right now, June 6th and June 20th. The new ferry dock is done for the Harson's Island Champions All Ferry going to Harson's Island, and all the weight restrictions have been lifted, so that's a good thing. And the, the yard waste yard is open, and we have social distancing being observed there. And they, of course, have been trained on the social distancing and disinfecting. They got the masks and everything to help keep them safe. Starville Bridge is rescheduled to be open May, the week of May 18th. Can't come quick enough. And we have May 7th, that's, what, three days, National Day of Prayer will be done at Algonquin Elementary School. Starting at 7 o'clock, this is gonna be out in the parking lot. And how it works, it's gonna be like a drive-in. We got a hold of a FM transmitter that will transmit about a block radius, and people will stay in their cars, and they'll, they'll tune into a FM stadia, station, and they will be able to hear everything going on. So that's kinda exciting and new way of doing things, like a lot of this have been forced to do lately. And as far as the, our rec programs, they are suspended to further notice. So I'm gonna unmute everybody. Any questions?
Yeah, Artie, on the COVID testing at the first community health center, do we have any stats on how many people have been tested and how many people are positive?
I, no, I'm not, I, I haven't seen anything as, well, if they're in the township, we haven't got, had a new case in quite some time. And like I say, we're, we only have one active take, case in the township right now. As, as the number they're, they're testing, I have no idea. So.
Artie, what are the total cases in, in the township?
I believe it's still 31 in total. And unfortunately, we did have one death, and, and right now, we, we have one active case. So we got a lot early on. And in, in the process, I think the second person of the county actually was a resident or something like that. But, yeah, we're definitely through the, hopefully, knock on wood, you know, and they, they do say that we're going to have a relapse, but, you know, the, the big thing is the, the capacity of the hospitals are, you know, they, I think only 4% of the hospital beds right now in the county is taken up by COVID. And I, I think the last time I read, it was 43 or 45% of the hospital beds are vacant. Nobody are, you know, they're in. So, you know, that, that's the big thing. That's why we, you know, the, the initial talk, flattening the curve is to allow the hospitals to take care of the, of the patients as they come in, so. On that, and they ramped up the, their capacity for some, so. Okay, anything else?
Hey, the cleanup weekend, it's scheduled for June 27th and 28th.
Yep.
What do you need from us as fellow board members to make this a success?
Clean out your garages.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, clean up their garages and I enjoy it, actually. Every, everybody's in a good mood, you know, they come and they, they throw all their stuff away and everything. Unfortunately, it's, well, kind of like scheduled, jobbing noon or two that weekend, or that Friday, so I'm not sure what kind of support we're gonna get from our fire department. I know George always manned the island fire, has that stuff, but we'll figure that out as it gets closer.
Hey, is the marsh cleanup on the same weekend, or is that a different date?
No, it's different. I'm not sure where that is yet. We'll have to talk about that right soon.
Sounds like that's gonna be an interesting weekend.
Oh, yeah.
I would think after the last couple of months, a lot of people have already cleaned out quite a bit, so.
Yeah, I know, that's a problem. Okay.
Have you heard about the strategies with blue water? Do they have sand, or are they out?
Last I, last I heard, they are out of sand, but I, I, I see some people hauling sand away around, so. I haven't confirmed that myself. They, they told me last week that they're gonna be out, so. Okay. We can, any public comments? Very no public comments. Move right along to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of April 6th and 20th. Check reports, communication, including a resignation of Mr. Ed Keller from our planning commission. And that's all that's on there.
Okay, we have motion and support.
And I'd like to, as far as Ed Keller's concerned, I'd like to wish him well in his, I guess, retirement from the planning commission. I know he was a positive force on that, that board, and he will be missed.
Yeah, I sent him a, an email and had a quick conversation with him. I, I'm not even sure how many years he's been on it. He's been on it for several years. Do you know Joanne by any chance, or?
Well, I know years ago, when I sat on the board, the planning commission, I sat next to him.
Right.
It's, it's, it's been, I would say, 15 years or something, maybe.
Yeah.
I called him, I called him and, you know, thanked him for all the years and everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Joanne, did you support that?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, he will be missed. Okay. Hearing, not hearing any more debate or questions? All those that support the consent agenda is submitted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose. Motion carries. George, Fire Chief.
Yes, I do. Good evening, everybody. Just to report for April. I attended several meetings regarding or involving COVID-19. I attended the homeowners association over in the Harson's Island homeowners association last month via teleconference. And the St. Clair County Chiefs Association meeting was canceled due to COVID-19 for last month. We've been getting a lot of requests for the fire department and the police department to do drive-bys for the birthday, birthday parades for their children. We had quite a few today also. I'd like to thank scoreboards and more. They made us two banners, one for the Easter Day parade and also for the birthday parade, so we put that on our fire truck as we drive by for the birthday parties. It looks really nice. Thank you. Fireboat one came back from the painter, from fiberglass specialists. Did an excellent job. Looks really nice. Thanks to Larry. We're just waiting for, I did get a mock-up of how we're gonna letter the boat from Chris. And I sent him a text back or an email back to request a quote for that, so hopefully I'll get that this week, and we'll get that lettered and put in the water. We do have Fireboat two in the water now, so if we get any more water rescues, we can leave right from the dock instead of launching it. Let's see what else. Been ordering a lot of disinfected equipment for the department, for both the, our department and the police department. So we're keeping everybody stacked up, so we're safe. That's it.
Is it easier to get that stuff now? Is it becoming more readily available, or?
It's not as easy as it should be.
Should be.
Yeah.
Hey, Chief, how was your incident rate? Has that increased or decreased with people staying home and sheltered?
Well, we've gone down like 40, we're 40, we're down 40 calls from last year. But yesterday, we did eight, and today, I think we did three. So they're starting to, they'll start picking up once the weather breaks.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's under blankets.
No, no.
Okay.
We did have one last night where we had to respond out to Anchor Bay, disabled boat, right in Anchor Bay, just out as you go out the North Channel and the West Side. Boat was broke down with six people on it. We had to go pick those up about 10:30 last night, so.
Wow. Yeah.
All right, good job, Chief. Thank you. Hey, I'm moving along to new business. We have Resolution 2020-03. It's the same resolution we passed last year. Basically requesting a me, immediate increase and strict enforcement of the body restrictions in the Clay Township by the St. Clair County's Marine Division due to high water levels. This is just a resolution telling them that we hope that they give us as much protection for our property owners as possible, and that they write tickets. So I'll entertain a motion. We can open up for discussion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-03, requesting Marine Patrol from the St. Clair County Sheriff.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion on this? As I did last year, I'll probably hand-deliver this up to the county and to the sheriff, and I, I, last year, I, I actually framed it. I, I put it on their office wall in their Marine Division, so.
Do, hey, Artie, do they, do they set the hours and the times and the days themselves, or?
Yes. Yep. Okay, any more discussion? Very none. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Reagan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. Next, I have a quote for a berm. We talked about doing this last year, and we got a quote from Cordis Brothers and for doing the fire department, and they wanted to know if we wanted to do the, the berm by the Pearl Beach Lions, who, they are one of our emergency shelters in the township. And actually, about a year, a year and a half ago, when we had the Corps of Engineers run around here, they suggested we do a berm for it also. The quote, as, as with the fire department, it, it, basically, they're giving us the dirt for free, which is pretty amazing. So it's a quote for just the labor. And I don't know if you bought dirt lately, but it's a, definitely a big savings to the township. And the cost for $4,950. I, part of me says, yeah, let's do it, because then we won't have to worry about it, but the other part says, you know, we're probably, we might be over the worst of the storm, but you know, as, as things happens, you know, we could have a wet spring the rest of it and wish we've done it, did it, so. I'll leave it up to the board.
That's over by where we across from the DPW, isn't it?
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, well, once you put the berms up, would that prevent the pumping?
No, no. It, what we, we've been doing the past couple of years is behind the water station, it helps our back property there, and it probably helps four or five residents that are, are between M29 and TAF. And it helps about like, oh, probably five, six people there. We just shoot it across into the, basically in the St. John's Marsh. And otherwise, otherwise, actually, there would be three other, three garages that have been continuously wet without the pumping. But that's something, it helps us and, and other people out.
So, so we, I thought they were doing work back there already.
Back.
Doing work over there already with that berm between the fire station and the
Well, they complete, they completed the fire station one, but they, they, we didn't, we never had, had got approved to do the, back behind the Pearl Beach Lions. So, and they said that they could do this right away, probably be this week if we do approve it. And I don't know if you saw what they did by the, behind the fire station, they still have to go put a little bit more dirt on it and some seed on it for that one to be done, so.
Well, is the Lions Club, does it have water coming in the, in the, in the building, or?
They, it's been close. They haven't been wet yet, but it's been close.
Better to be safe than
Footing this bill?
What's that?
And why, why are we footing this bill?
Well, we, 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 we can, because they are emergency standby station for like a warming center, or if we have to put people up. They're, they're, they're considered a, a emergency center.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I do know that Pearl Beach Lions Club, they do a lot for the community with the various functions going on and everything, and they don't, so sometimes they don't get enough credit for it, so.
Right, right.
Based on that, and with the, with the potential of being a community center at some, some point in time, if not already, I'll go ahead and make a motion for $4,950 for the berm at the specified location.
I'll support that. Okay.
Okay, motion and support. Yeah, they, they are a, a, a center, just as all the Lions Clubs, the Harson's Island Lions Club is, Elmac Lions Hall is. And, you know, if we ever need anything for any, that we can open it up and put people in there if, God forbid, we have to.
Well, I'll say the Pearl Beach Lions have been great to our community. And under these times in particular, I don't think that they really have the money to be able to protect our emergency center, so I'm, I'm on board with that, for sure.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion? Do we have any more discussion?
Better to be safe than sorry.
That's right. Well, you know, like, and it's not only gonna protect it this year, but 20 years from now, it will protect it too. So that's why I'm not opposed to doing it and getting it done. So, and you know what? One of our contractors said, well, actually, they can probably start work. Well, May 7th, they can start work. So, you know, employee locals. So. All right, any more discussion?
They approached us about this berm?
Well, we approached them, actually, this is six months ago. We were trying to get quotes and everybody was so busy. We couldn't, John couldn't even get a quote. And he did get a, finally, we got a quote from Cordis Brothers. And then when the shutdown was, hey, we can do this right now. Okay, boom. And John, there was talk about doing the Pearl Beach Lions also. And so that's why we asked them for the quote and to do it. So no, I, we approached them. Answer your question.
Do we know where they're getting the fill from?
Yeah, they have a stockpile at their yards, I believe, at Cordis Brothers. I noticed they had, they got quite a lot of dirt in their backyard. I drove by there about four or five days ago.
Yeah, they do.
So, that's what I'm assuming. Sorry, any more discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion, all in favor of the motion of putting a berm around the Pearl Beach Lions Hall for the price of $4,950, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, we have Anthony on board. He can chime in. We have the DPW's requesting sewer flow meters. This is gonna be through our SAW grant. So it's gonna be money in, money out. John's not on the call for, I'm sure he's having technical difficulties. The total price, we did get three quotes, is $47,331.85. Anthony, you wanna chime in and fill the board with this is for?
Sure.
And what else you wanna talk about on our SAW grant?
Okay, yes. So the one aspect of the SAW grant is to meter the flows in the sewer system and to create a model. The goal being, sorry? Yeah, the goal being to, the goal being to, to perform an INI study, an infiltration and inflow study, that will help us to prioritize what are the most difficult challenges in the collection system and add that to our condition assessment that we plan on doing as well by camera, cleaning and cammering. The challenge though is to catch the, to catch the season. And so that's why the flow meters are a bit time-sensitive because we're approaching or almost in the wet season for the first spring of the grant program. And really, it seems like we have a lot of time because it's a three-year grant. But you have to consider the last year is not, you can't count that when you're doing data acquisition. Because by that time, you're already putting all your data together and to formulate it into your reports. And you've already, you're already, you're already well on your way to modeling it. So the first two years are the most important for metering. And the sooner you're able to get it in, obviously, you put meters in and sometimes certain locations will be completely fine. And some, most times they're completely fine, but every once in a while, you get a challenging one. And it'll give you some trouble and you'll lose, like, you might lose those first couple of months on those ones. And that's why year two gives you that cushion. By that time, you've got all the, every single meter going right. And you've worked out all kind, all the, any kind of issues, hydraulic issues. So I could, I could share my screen if you allow it. I just will open up the webpage for the, for the meters. Because I guess the first thing is, is the type of meter that we've had a good experience with.
I think I just allowed it.
Okay.
I know we got a quote from Lower 48 Instruments. That was the best of the three.
Yeah, let me see. This'll give me the, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Here, I'm at their website. So the, this is the actual meter. There's many suppliers in the United States. But this meter, back in 2015, we did a lot of research into what were the options out there. And based on a study, which you can find on their website, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, this, this flow meter turned out to be the best in terms of accuracy, flexibility, because there's multiple sensor types that can fit with the same platform. And then also, for us, the most important thing is also data management. So this meter box produces an Excel file, which is easily shareable. And it already kind of, it puts everything into a format that doesn't need a lot of data processing time. So we've had good experience with these in Ira, in New Baltimore, in Caterville, bought them at the end of their grant with the intentions of using them in the future for, during their improvement. So that's another plus because I'll scroll down here to show you. So this is what the box looks like on the outside. You may have seen these just going around in the region. But if you open that box up, you'll see that there's, it's basically these cards. And each card can do a different thing. So you can plug and play and change the box to suit a different purpose later on, well after the grant's done. When I first started, the, most people were just renting them for nine months and then returning them. And I compared that cost to purchasing them. And the grant program allowed us to purchase them. So, and I showed that, that is almost the same, it was, I think, exactly the same price to purchase the meter versus to rent it for nine months and have somebody monitor that meter. These meters will store data for up to, depending on how you set them, two months. That's a pretty common number. You usually will start checking them sooner and then gradually you trust that meter and you can, you can let it take data for a month during the grant process. But then that meter is yours. So we will try, our plan for Clay Township is to install these in, all of them but one in permanent locations. And so they'll be there for, for the, they'll be attached to a pump station. And that will provide flow data that previously the DPW never had. And then one will be a portable meter because we have 14 pump stations. What I devised is a way that we can use one as a portable that will move around to the other stations. And we can develop a method of pump cycling with that portable meter as a way of calibrating. So that way, we can get actually flow data for all the stations. But in a kind of, some of the stations, it don't merit their own meter, at least not for the grant program. And they're just sort of in line with another pump station downstream. So I can just monitor that location. So we came up with the kind of inventory of what meters we would need, what type of sensors. And you can see the sensor types are right here on the bottom and which sensors we would need. And pretty much everything is this one, this one type right here. But we have a lot of extra, so we'll have meters that are almost all the same with similar parts. So if we had any issues, we can also keep an inventory of parts on hand to keep everything going. So that's, that's basically it. The three quotes are from three different, three different suppliers. One is actually a company that purchased Mace. Mace was, is an Australian company. And they were, they were purchased by an American company in Colorado, in C2. And so now they're, they're an American company. And they, but Lower 48, the Australian VP for the US, he joined Lower 48 as a partner. And so I think that's how he's getting some special discounts, legacy discounts, that gave, gave him the ability to give us a better price. And they have excellent support. That gentleman, extremely knowledgeable on flows. And when you have certain sensors, you need a little bit more expertise than what we do in house. We can do open channel. You see, in the screen here, it says full pipes, partial full pipes and open channels. And we can easily do partial full pipes and open channel calibrating at PCE. But the full pipe with that type of sensor requires a little bit more skill. So that's good because that supplier can do that calibration service as well for us. So that, that's, that's why we're recommending them. And we've had good experience with them in the past. And they've done the size of sale and everything came in. So we never had any problem.
Now, Tony, what's our existing status as far as, what are we using now, if anything?
Nothing. Yeah, we don't have any real monitoring instruments. Not, we can do some pump cycle monitoring if we wanted. But you know, the pumps, as they get older, they'll pump different volumes. And so you would actually have to verify those. And then, and then I'm gonna do that partially to economize.
Tony, let me interrupt you for a minute. Is there gonna be a return on investment on this?
Yeah, because the meters will be, belong to the township. The alternative option is renting, renting. And if you rent, then they're gone. In nine months, the company will come and take them away. So.
Now, well, from a, me being the illiterate or what you're talking about here as far as flows, I'm trying to grasp how that is going to benefit the township money-wise.
Sure. Sure. So, so when you're able to monitor the flows, you'll be able to determine, first of all, now, what is the current amount of volume of water that is going through the sewer system that shouldn't be there? So you quantify that using these meters. And then as we do our capital improvements every year, we can, we can go back to those meters, which will be permanent installs. And we can see, based on what we spent to repair the collection system, was there a, was there an actual benefit in terms of reduction of flow into the sewer system that doesn't belong there? So you know, let's say you're monitoring a point and you're getting 100,000 gallons per day through it. And then you do repairs upstream in the pipeline and you find that that's now down to 70,000 gallons per day. So now you've reduced by 30% the flow that's in the sewer that we're sending to the, that we're paying Algenac to treat, that we don't need to pay anymore. Because it didn't belong there anyways. It was, you know, groundwater or water coming in from a rain event or something like that.
And to further answer your question, Mark, this, this really won't cost the township any, any money. It's gonna be money in, money out on our SAW grant. You know, we got a million dollar SAW grant to do a study on our sewer system. And this will be covered by it.
Okay, so this is all a part of that major overhaul we were, we were still doing.
Yeah, this, it's not with, with the sewer interceptor, it's with the whole SAW grant. Why give a, Anthony, you wanna give a basic rundown on the SAW grant?
Sure. So the SAW grant, I think when I, when I spoke about it last time, the grant is a program from the state. It provides 90% reimbursement of the, of the grant award. So for example, Clay Township's grant award is 1.1, let me see here. I have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's 1.1 and we get like 990 something.
Yeah, 1.11 million. And so 90% of that is reimbursed by the state. And then 10% is, is the matching that comes from Clay Township. Among those items that, that that program involves, we do inventory on all our, all our system. We do a condition assessment of all the system. We meter and model the flows. So your base sanitary flow, your infiltration, your, your inflow components from, from rain events. And then we put all that material into a GIS mapping, which then is used in our asset management software. And how that, how that's really important is, for example, if you have a community who has had an overflow, they've had a violation. When they, the state will deal with the violation, they'll say, you know, what is your plan to address it? Do you have an asset management program? Do you have a capital improvement plan? What do you plan to do in the next five years? You would have to come up with all those answers mandated by the state with your own funds. This SAW grant program pays for you to do that. So you have all those, all that required information at hand at the end of the program. And so it basically pays you to, to prepare your, your own system in the method they want you to manage it so that there's a, there's a good record-keeping in a, in a chain of, I guess, a chain of events that, that helps them to determine if everything's okay. And if there, you know, if there's a problem, how to address it.
Okay. So if we own the meteor, the meters and they become disabled somehow, I'm sure there's a warranty or something on them. But say in five years from now and warranties out, who's gonna, is there SAW grant money available for that then, for repair or replacement?
I know, but just to give an example, like Ira Township purchased in 2015 these meters. And so that's about five years ago. And, and many of them, I mean, all, all of them are still operational. When, you know, you have to do standard calibrations, which can be a few thousand dollars a year, well, a few thousand dollars every time you calibrate. You can do that every couple of years, you know, if you want to keep them going, which is, which is a common operation and maintenance cost. Other than that, they don't really cost anything long-term. They're in a Pelican box. They don't really have a lot of expensive upkeep. It's really just making sure that, that you're keeping up on the data and, and you're doing the, the regular calibrations every few years.
Hey Anthony, which list stations would be the permanent meters? Would you recommend us leaving in?
So you have the station on Greenwood, which would take care of that northern side. Then you would have, I want to put two meter heads in, which, which will be for the grant program. One at the, that's recording the total flows at the wastewater treatment plant that's Clay and Ira combined.
Yeah.
And one, and one at Zobel, that will record at Zobel so I can deduct it. Now I have my total Clay Township flows.
Gotcha.
Which is good because then we can compare that to our bill.
Yep.
The other thing then is the two stations that actually are county-run, Pearl Beach and River Street. I want to put them there because that breaks up the system into thirds. And just based on volume. And then the remaining meters, there's, I believe, one we're gonna put on Flamingo and one on Anchor Bay Drive, right there by the liquor store. And then.
So this will tell us if we're having.
Channel side. Yep.
Yeah, so, so if we have an infiltration problem, we can narrow it down to where it's coming from.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, good. Wanna unshare our?
Sure.
Okay. All right, does it, so everyone kind of have a handle on this?
Yep, thank you very much. Yep, thank you very much for the info. Appreciate it.
And just, just for everyone's information too, the, our share of this is lower 100 grand. And in-kind service also goes against the, the grant itself. And we, we've been doing things since, I think, 2013 or 14 that we're, we're tracking on. And we probably already met, met our share, if not pretty close to it. And a good portion of the things we've been doing on the sewer interceptor too, will also go towards it. So we already have our grant, our, our share for this million-dollar grant, pretty much met, so.
Yep.
And for everyone else, I, we're going to get our full report from our sewer interceptor and OHM here pretty soon too. That's been put off because of recent events with the virus. And, you know, they, they should be coming to one of our meetings here in the next month or so.
Anthony, I got a quick question. The data collection on the boxes, does that data transmit to us? Do we have to physically go retrieve it from like a, like the card? We have to pull the card?
So it's a, you could go with your laptop and just boot in and, and download the data. Our goal, our goal is to, to look at a way to, to have communications to each station that we would long-term not have to do that. It's just that takes a little time. And so initially we'll be taking the data and, and that's just so that we have that data and we don't miss the season. But long-term, our, our objective is to tie that into, into a communications protocol that then would, would be transmitted and the, and the DPW would not have to do that. So the goal being is that when the grant program's over, they won't have to go do that collection if they don't want to. But it's like I said, every six weeks, you can go and you download it.
Okay. Who's going to do that? Our, our water department or DPW?
Well, we'll prob, a PCE will probably do it. We'll teach the DPW how to do it as well, which is, which is easy. We'll also train them on how to maintain the meters and, and do all that. That's pretty simple.
Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions for Anthony?
You said we had the three quotes and you're recommending the, what, the all test?
Lower 48. It's for $47,331.85.
Oh, okay.
So I will entertain a motion if the board so chooses.
That's not me. Sandy's smiling, must be her.
Hey, Board, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Lower 48 Instruments bid of $47,331.85 for the purchase of our new flow meters.
Support.
Here we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
What? Any more discussion?
No, sorry.
It's all right.
Hearing none, roll a call vote, please.
Freddie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes, we just didn't hear.
Oh. Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Anthony. Next, we have the, set our soil, our public hearing for our soil removal permits. And I'll make a motion, we set our soil removal public hearing for June 1st, 2020. And hopefully it will be in-person and not a Zoom meeting. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Board Member comments. Cindy Valentine, do we have anything?
No, thank goodness. We have no election tomorrow, so.
Yes.
Our next election is going to be in August. If you request an absentee ballot, the applications will go out in July. I'll have.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, the Plaid Commission will have a public hearing on the 7th, which is Thursday. And they are continuing, it looks like they're continuing to put in, or they're back to work now, putting the gas lines in along Point Trumbull and some of the side streets. So that's, road construction's going to be underway and just be careful out there driving up and down the roads. They, they got to have those tractors and other equipment coming back out at you, so. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne?
Yes, our next zoning board of appeals meeting will be on May the 20th. And by way of Zoom meeting so far, there's three appeals on this, for this meeting. Two dealing with boathouse, the boathouses. One seeking a variance regarding setbacks. And hopefully we will be able to do more freely as the governor relaxes some of these things, so.
Yeah, there's a good chance unless something changes, that will be a, not a Zoom meeting.
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping that anyway. So everybody go for now, stay home, stay healthy and wear your mask when you go for your groceries.
All right, Sandy?
I just want to give a shout out and big thank you to Chief Rose and Chief Coach for continuing to bring some positivity to our residents and in our community through all of this. And hopefully we can re-engage quickly.
All right, Chris, Chris?
Yeah, a little shout out to Mr. Ed Keller for all of his wonderful years of service. Thank you very much. And to my fellow board members, may the fourth be with you.
Oh, yeah, is this, is this the Star Wars?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I thought. All right, that's, that's funny. Chrissy?
I just want to say thank you to George for keeping us supplied with all our PPE here so that we can keep processing payments and things. And I also want to say that we are aware of an issue with the mail. I'm sure everyone is experiencing a slowdown of their mail. But we have had a huge slowdown of mail. We had a March 31st postmark date that we just received today. So it is quite possible that you received a reminder bill if you have a question about it because you think that you already paid. You can go ahead and give me a call, but we have been experiencing that.
Thank you, yes.
All right, I guess it's up to me now. I'm excited we're able to pull off the, the National Day of Prayer, May 7th. And it'll be totally safe. It'll be like a drive-in theater kind of, kind of thing. But at least we're, we're able to pull it off and, and, and it's been a challenge. Like I'm a part of Rotary and the community foundation, both scholarships, or colleges. And we've been meeting, we got a lot of applicants in. I think Rotary received 21 applicants. And we're, we're going to be making choices and awarding scholarships. I'm glad, glad that kind of stuff is going forward. It's really important. And it, it, it makes a bit more of a challenge, but we're, we're, we're fiddling our way through it. And I, I, I literally can't say enough about our community, about people stepping up with helping out the food pantry, the, the food giveaways. There's definitely a need in our community for this kind of thing. And like I say, I just can't praise our community enough. I know a lot of people are, are in different communities around the country or, or doing, probably the world probably doing this. But I think for the size of our community and the needs, boy, we're stepping up huge. And it, it warms my heart to see that. And every day I got people already, how can I help or do you need this or that? Unfortunately, with all the social distancing, we can't have big parties of volunteers. But yeah, it's, it's, it's really pretty cool. We have an awesome community. So I just want to leave with that note, so. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Joanne, you always do that one. Okay, all in favor? Motion to accept it. Everyone have a good week. If you need anything, get ahold of me or anybody else and signing off. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
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 Night.